To achieve confidence and to gain or to enhance their personal growth. I would request all the members and guests sitting. Put their mic on mute mode, accept the speaker. To preside tonight's meeting, we have a vibrant and multi-talented toastmaster. Toastmaster Dr. Sheetal Agarwal. Doctor Sheetal Agarwal is a doctor by profession. And she is a dynamic leader. So please join me to welcome Doctor Sheetal Agarwal, the club president.
Thank you Toastmaster Abid for this encouraging introduction. Dear leaders, fellow toastmasters and guests, very warm good evening to everyone present here. Today, we are celebrating nineteenth club anniversary. On this occasion, I take the opportunity to welcome Doctor Said Hamid Sal, a formal principal of IIS Jubel, current director of the MS Education Academy Hyderabad. Arabian past presidents, area fifty-three director, toastmaster Arul Shankar and the fellow members. Leaders, lastly, I would like to welcome my dear Arabians and guests to this nineteenth club anniversary special meeting. Welcome to all of you. I can promise you all nothing but a motivational, educational and fun-filled evening on this virtual platform. Now, I would like to call our ever-smiling past president who is amiable and as cool as the cucumber, Toastmaster Saayra Uman to propose toast to the Arabians. Toastmaster Saayra, over to you.
Thank you, Madam President. Respected Chief Guest, Doctor Saayra Hamid Sir, Madam President, dignitaries, fellow Toastmasters and distinguished guests, a very blessing indeed to you all. Tonight is indeed a night for celebration. A night where we Arabians celebrate our past glory, our achievements. A night where we remember our past leaders who have made our club what it is today. It is a night that celebrates the bonding and togetherness of the Arabs that makes it indeed a club of distinction. During the course of its journey, nineteen wonderful years, Arabian Toastmasters has indeed matured into a fine club setting the standards of the true Toastmaster spirit of harmony, innovation and camaraderie. We have creative leaders and champion speakers. But it was all possible due to the commitment and dedication of our leaders and members. Dear Toastmasters and guests, don't be angry that two leaders don't create mere followers. Agree with more leaders. I don't think Arabian Toastmasters is the best example of that.
Toastmaster Saayra G, can you come closer to the mic, please?
You can't, can you?
It's very feeble.
Is it okay now?
It's better.
It's better? Okay. So, it is absolutely true in our case and I take this opportunity to salute the past leaders for their foresightedness and visionary leadership. The leadership of our club has always managed to steer our club through troubled waters and bring us to this point in this eventful journey. I take this opportunity to thank all our past leaders, the president and the ex-com members for their unchallenged efforts. Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in proposing a toast to our past leaders for their glorious achievements. A toast to the current leadership for its vibrant performance and for success in all their future endeavors throughout the current Toastmaster year. A toast to health, to the health and well-being of all the members of ATC. A toast to the health and well-being of all members in our area fifty-three, division L, district seventy-nine and to the entire Toastmaster fraternity. May our club continue to shed the light of each and every Arabian by bringing out the best in them. May the spirit of Toastmasters continue to shine from our club. May more leaders and champion speakers continue to emerge and blossom from this club. Cheers, dear Arabians and guests.
Cheers.
Cheers to Arabians.
Cheers to the Arabians.
Cheers to the Arabians.
Thank you.
Cheers to Arabians.
Cheers to Arabians.
Thank you, Toastmaster Saayra.
Cheers to Arabians.
Dear friends, a celebration is a special enjoyable event that people organize because something pleasant has happened. And today, we have grown older, stronger and wiser, which gives us a strong reason to celebrate. Today, we got the reason to celebrate because nineteen years ago, few strong and visionary leaders had joined hands together and led a foundation of this strong mighty club. Arabian Toastmasters Club was chartered in October two thousand two. The club was co-sponsored by the OSS Toastmasters Club and Jubel Toastmasters Club respectively. The club sponsors were Toastmaster Joe Spacatil and the Toastmaster Abdul Hafiz. The club mentors were DTM Intias Ahmed and the Toastmaster Matthew Sebastian. Toastmaster Joe Spacatil was the charter president. Toastmaster Matthew Sebastian was the vice president education. The vice president membership was Toastmaster Nanduganpati and the Toastmaster Suresh Kumar was the club secretary. The charting ceremony of the club was conducted in a great form at the Intercontinental Hotel Al Jubel. In the presence of the Gulf Toastmasters Council President, DTM Jan Kiprazad Patnaik and many leaders from the Toastmasters fraternity in the Middle East. The chief guest for the event was Miss Maluk Balsa, the editor-in-chief of the Arab News. Ever since, the club has grown into a strong, a vibrant entity among the Toastmasters Club in District Seventy-Nine. The club has developed several champion speakers and leaders who have brought laurels to the club. Our members have been venus at the club area and the division levels. Our members have also been participated all the district level contests held at Kuwait, Jordan and Abu Dhabi before the formation of District Seventy-Nine KSA. Our member have also represented District Seventy-Nine in all the forms of the contest. The members of the Arabian Toastmasters Club have also some directors, governors at the area and the division and some of them have also served as a part of the district leadership team. To achieve all these, our leaders had worked hard along with their team. So, on the occasion of nineteenth club anniversary celebration, I take an opportunity to express my gratitude to all the past presidents of Arabian Toastmasters Club and their team right from two thousand two. I thank to, now let me share my screen. I thank to our founder club president, Toastmaster Joe Spacatil, Toastmaster Nanduganpati, DTM Suresh Kumar, DTM Vasudar Gopal, Toastmaster Jamal Jahil, DTM Ajit Kumar, Toastmaster Martin Valhavn, DTM Jacob Kuriakos, DTM Rechi Thomas, Toastmaster Sharm Pillai, Toastmaster John Roy, DTM Ooman Thomas, Toastmaster Avilaash Raj Shekharan, DTM Vijay Kumar, Toastmaster Vichatri Pathi, Toastmaster Amitab Sargno, Toastmaster Chin Meleka, Toastmasters Neha Suresh, Toastmaster Anup Ilias Paul, Toastmasters Saayra Uman and finally, our immediate past president, Toastmaster Agul Shankar. Thank you. Thank you very much for bringing us to this level. Celebration is an integral part of life. It adds an excitement and lot of fun to life and to the work we do. So, it's always important that you should celebrate all your milestones and the major accomplishments. Celebrating gives us a sense of achievement and it is a great way of rewarding ourselves for a job well done. So, to mention here, in last one year, members of Arabian Toastmasters Club work hard to overcome the pandemic hurdle and to bring many rol- rol- to bring many awards such as Toastmaster Rahul Agarwal achieved table topic champion at the division L in his debut year. Toastmaster Sangita Ramaswamy first runner-up at the Division L International Speech Contest. Toastmaster Rupa Avdhani Yumras Champion at area level. Club achieved distinguished club status. DTM Vijay played important role as a chairperson of DLC twenty twenty-one and the Toastmaster Dr. Shanti Rekha as a vice chair of DLC twenty twenty-one. Many members of club took differently leadership roles at division and the district level. Toastmaster Sheetal Agarwal and the Toastmaster Sangita Ramaswamy received triple crown award from District Seventy-Nine. Toastmaster Saayra Uman received a dolphin award from the District Seventy-Nine. Toastmaster Dr. Shanti Rekha received a best leader of the division award twenty twenty-one. Among last ex-com team, Toastmaster Sheetal Agarwal received award for the best VP Education of Division L. Toastmaster Sangita Ramaswamy as a best VP PR of Division L. Toastmaster Uday Kumar as a best vice president membership of Division L and the Toastmaster Ravish Malpani as a best secretary of the Division L. The last quarter was a golden quarter for the club. The club received golden quarter award where we renew for twenty members. But we have renewed for the twenty-nine members for the term October twenty-one to March twenty-two. We have inducted four new members and reinstated one old member. With this, we received this medley award. Presently, we have seven overseas member in our club thanks to this virtual platform. I really feel proud to be the president of this prestigious club, which is a group of finest leaders of the Jubel Toastmasters fraternity. So, isn't it a great reason to celebrate? Yes, celebration is really an integral part of life and it is something that everyone should take time for it. I would like to thank to each one present here for taking out time from your busy schedule to join us and to celebrate with us. When you hear about celebration, what comes first in your mind? Anyone? Okay, let me go. Nice dress up. Mind-blowing decoration, pleasant and comfortable atmosphere, music, fun and yummy luxurious cake and food, which was supposed to be the part of ATC anniversary celebration before pandemic. But irrespective of the situations, Arabians always float over views. And today, to take us for an enjoyable rollercoaster ride, we have Toastmaster Ravish Malpani as a master of ceremony. He is very diligent, his learning enthusiasm is very contagious. He always travels that extra mile to help others. Serve as a contest chair at division level in his debut year. Please put your hands together to welcome Toastmaster Ravish Malpani as a master of ceremony for this special meeting. Over to you, Toastmaster Ravish Malpani.
Thank you, Madam President, for the wonderful introduction. Thank you. The red toastmasters of the Toastmaster Fraternity, Galaxy of Dignitaries. Respected chief guest, respected dignitaries, diligent leaders of our dynamic district seventy-nine. My dear fellow Toastmasters and distinguished guests, a warm good evening to all of you.
Good evening.
I'm highly privileged and honored to be a master of ceremony of the Arabian Toastmaster Club Anniversary Meeting. A special meeting to celebrate nineteenth anniversary of the ATC Foundation since two thousand two. The year two thousand two was notable for many reasons. It was the year that the space shuttle Columbia flies the Hubble Space Telescope service mission. US invasion of Afghanistan started. Spider-Man was released in the theater as the first film of the Spider-Man trilogy. Apple released its second generation iPod. And two thousand two, with the encouragement of the Jubel Toastmaster Fraternity and the ambitious visions of our founding members, Arabian Toastmaster Clubs was chartered. Right? So, what's today's program? Well, our club theme is ATC move forward and committed to excellence. But when contemplating the future, it is also important that we celebrate the past achievements and reflect on ATC's journey during our glorious nineteen years history. And that's the same reason today, we all have gathered to celebrate the spatial bonding and the togetherness of the Arabians that's making a club of distinction. On behalf of ATC, I, Toastmaster Ravish Malpani, take the privilege to welcome you all for this magnificent ATC anniversary meeting. Having said this, let's kickstart today's meeting with a great Arabian video showcasing our golden memories of this journey till date. Are you ready for it? Let's watch the move to our great Arabian video. Wow. The video was full of the memories to remember and cherish forever, isn't it? Now, moving further, yes, the special, this meeting is special in every sense. And one of the special reasons is we have our diligent chief guest with us. So, moving further, let me take the privilege to humbly invite a great personality for today's chief guest address. We have a visionary leader who is presently serving as the director, MS Education Academy Hyderabad. He is a renowned accommodation, a PhD holder with forty-first years of rich experience in the education field in CBC schools. He has given immense and special contributions to the CBAC in their educational programs globally. He has in his bag various achievements and awards like KVS Best Teacher Award and CRT National Award, Kindle of Saudi Arabia, MOE Best Principal Honor and many more. He has published many educational materials, including handouts for the teacher training. Yes, he is none other than our Doctor Said Hamid, to whom we always look upon for inspiration and guidance. Please help me welcome Doctor Said Hamid on the virtual stage for his chief guest address. Sir, the virtual stage is yours.
Sir, you need to unmute.
I need to unmute. Thank you so much, Master ceremonies. At the outset, I should really thank Madam Toastmaster, Doctor Sheetal Agarwal and Doctor Shanti Rekha, my colleague, Saayra Uman, another colleague of mine and many more who still remember. It is exactly two years and two months that I, I, I am away from Jubel. But these wonderful colleagues of mine and also particularly Arabian Toastmasters. One incident I remember before I move that my own mentor Suresh Kumar took me to the club meeting of Arabian Toastmasters. And Mrs. Suresh Kumar also was present. And I do not know that day, Suresh Kumar started a bit stuttering, a little stammering, I do not know. And then madam said, my husband speaks very well. It is simply because his teacher is present today and he is not able to for his usually or continuously speak. That's a wonderful way of supporting and also protecting husband, you see. Where is Neha Madam? She is there with us. Suresh G. Wonderful. Then I want Suresh Madam, eh?
Yeah, yes, I'm here, sir.
Ah, maybe you might have forgotten, but you said because teacher is present and student is bit confusing, getting confused. No, Suresh himself has proved to be one of the best speakers and as his teacher in the year nineteen seventy-six, seventy-seven, seventy-eight, seventy-nine and at KV Malkapuram, I feel proud and I am still able to see Suresh Kumar, my own student. So, Arabian Toastmasters, you see, it is the nineteenth birthday adolescent age. Our Doctor Sheetal Madam will say that adolescent age has many advantages and also a few disadvantages. Dynamism, full of energy, enthusiasm and unlimited proliferation of body cells when the child enters that age called adolescent period. A transitory stage between childhood and adulthood. Maybe be close to that matured adulthood stage. I pray, I wish all the best to all Arabian Toastmasters. Particularly the ex-com and also all those who thought of inviting me. Though I am away from you, I really heartily thank you and extend my, my greetings to you all. Having said that, because of Mr. Suresh Kumar and Wahid Latif Sahib, I should say that I became very close to almost all the Toastmasters and the Toastmaster Clubs in Jubel. I, I never used to miss my evenings. Used to be with the wonderful intellectual joints associating and doing this wonderful academic activity. And my students were the beneficiaries. They've got benefited and whenever I wanted little help in preparing our students for international debates, that is inter-school debates, cluster level, zonal level. Jubel used to dominate and other schools, there are nearly thirty-nine CBSC schools. They used to shiver in their shoes if they they used to shiver in their shoes if they have to face IAS Jubail student. And it was simply because the support, the help that we got. How much of help I have got, I just used to invite Suresh Kumar, Toastmaster Suresh Kumar and sometimes Safair Sahib, Mohammed Safair and Wahid Latif Sahib. Of course, Syrah Omen used to play a big role in inviting these people. Asif Siddiqui was another supportive hand to our students. We got that name, it is because Toastmasters were behind us. And may God bless all of us, this academic activity is not just confining to Toastmasters, it has spread to schools. Now, as I am very lucky person, born very lucky, I joined this organization called MS Education Academy. Dr. Shanti Rekha addressed some of my colleagues here. They have hundred and two institutions in India. Hundred and two institutions have contributed one hundred and sixty-eight doctors last year under government seat, what we call convener quota. So, hundred and sixty-eight doctors, one single organization. They said, "Sir, you have joined and we have achieved this." It was only to boost me or my morale because I have joined this organization only to guide the senior principals and senior lecturers. All that get through Kendri Vidyalayas and next Indian Embassy School. Wonderful thing that I find among Toastmasters is they always try to support their colleagues. And not only support, they protect the ego of, adult ego of Toastmasters. See, if ego is hurt, we never attend such meetings. So, safe and supportive academic environment, totally positive environment is seen in all meetings. And this is nothing new to all of you, but I thought I should share that you really are safe environment, supportive environment and smiling faces. And we become totally negative people. And I was the luckiest principal there in school, how lucky I am till last minute of my life, last breath of my life. I'll remember Jubail School because that brought me that highest honour, National Award from the President of India. I do not know whether I could have achieved it if I were to be in India. So, effective communication is spreading in Jubail and the beneficiaries, as I said, are my students. So talented and gifted Toastmasters, please enjoy this evening. And from my side, I pray God, all these wonderful Toastmasters, Arabian Toastmasters should bloom and bless my students because now we are starting gavel clubs in all our schools. As I said, a hundred and two institutions are there, but first pilot project or phase one, I have requested the principals to introduce gavel clubs in twenty schools in Hyderabad and then we move to UPN Delhi and Bombay where we have MS Academy Schools. I need a little of help from all of you, please extend that help and let us younger generation. By seeing Rahul Agarwal, I thought my student, who is already a Toastmaster in India. Is it, is it so? No.
I don't recall.
Anyway... No, sir, a boy by your name was our talented table tennis player in IAS Jubail and he studied engineering in NIT Suratkal, one of the prestigious engineering colleges. And then he was about to get into PG, I got, and there is no much connection with Rahul Agarwal. So wonderful thing, wonderful evening. Thanks once again to the club president, Dr. Shital Madam and also Shanti Rekha, Omen Madam and my own student Suresh Kumar. You may find that Ajit Kumarji and myself look a bit similar now. Of course, he is very smart and a cute person. I have spent lot of time with these wonderful Toastmasters. Thank you so much, let me enjoy the program, the nineteenth birthday of Arabian Toastmasters. God bless you all, thank you and over to you, what is the word?
Master of ceremonies.
Master of ceremonies, over to you. Yes, sir, yes, sir, please take over.
Thank you, thank you, sir, for your stimulating address and the words of wisdom. Yes, you have currently identified your student Rahul Agarwal as a best TT that said table topic, sorry, table tennis player and we also have Rahul as a best TT as a table topics player. So there is a resemblance, we correctly identified, thank you, sir.
Wonderful, sir.
Well, fellow Toastmasters, moving next to the agenda. Now, it's a very special event. You must agree with me that it seems that even as the digital revolution progresses and deepens and so perhaps the ELU are the great civic spaces, the spaces where people can come together to study, to think, to read and to make new knowledge. Yes, libraries have a very particular role to play in this changing world as they are the custodians of the memory of intellectual heritage. They preserve it, help it to grow in each generation and hand it carefully to the next one. Setting such an example, today we are also going to witness the inauguration of our own club library named as ATC Reading Corner. I take the privilege to humbly invite a very humble and a gentleman, Toastmaster Rahul Agarwal for same. He is working as a Senior Chemical Engineer at Sadara and with time, he has developed himself to the next level in a Toastmaster journey with lot of sparks within him to debate better always. Toastmaster Rahul Agarwal, the virtual stage is yours.
Thank you, Toastmaster. Good evening, dear Toastmasters, Dr. Hamid sir and guests. Do you want to stay young, healthy and sharp forever? I am sure everyone of you wants to, right? Well, one of the key habits to stay young, healthy and sharp forever is to read regularly. It stimulates new ideas, imagination and thoughts. I am sure we have some voracious readers in the audience today. Not long time back, Arabian took the initiative of introducing a new book or a novel in each of the club meetings. It was a great inspiration to me. I came to know about many new, rich and varied books like Born a Crime by Trevor Noah, A Thousand Splendid Sons by Khalid Hosani, Kafka on the Shore by Japanese author Murakami and Inside Steve's Brain by Leander Khan. Just to name a few. It filed up the reader inside me, my imagination. I started reading books and novels and found the forgotten treasure. Friends, this is the time to take the reading adventure to the next level by introducing Arabian Toastmasters Club Reading Corner. It's ATC's first club library and full of wide variety of books and novels. And in case if you want to lay hands on one of the treasure, it's very simple. Just reach out to me or club president and you can borrow a book for a month. I take this opportunity to thank one of our founder members, DTM Suresh Kumar and Sneha Ma'am for their extreme contribution. They have contributed almost hundred books, invaluable books and novels to ATC's corner. Now, I invite our chief guest, Dr. Hamid sir, DTM Suresh Kumar, Sneha Ma'am and Toastmaster Dr. Shital Agarwal to inaugurate ATC Reading Corner. I humbly request to acknowledge your presence.
I'm here, Toastmaster.
Yes, sir, we are present and very happy to be a part of this wonderful ceremony, inauguration of Reading Corner.
Thank you, I request Toastmaster Dr. Shital to play the inaugural video, please. I thank Dr. Hamid sir, DTM Suresh sir, Sneha ma'am and Toastmaster Dr. Shital. This is an amazing treasure, believe me. I request all the members to take full benefit of the club library. Also, I take this opportunity to invite DTM Suresh sir to speak a few words. Over to you, DTM Suresh.
Thank you very much, Toastmaster Rahul, for that fine presentation and nice, kind words. Actually, I always believe that to be a good speaker, you have to be a good reader. And this initiative, I'm sure Arabians have always built great speakers and I'm sure this innovative idea and the innovation that Arabian has brought forward will help to build greater speakers and strengthen the club and make it more vibrant. Thank you for the initiative and I'm sure we'll have many more, many more great speakers of Arabian by this great initiative, thank you so much.
Thank you, DTM Suresh, also I request Sneha Ma'am to please speak a few words.
Good evening, fellow Toastmasters, Chief Guest, Dr. Syrah Hamid. It's wonderful to see the books that we were able to give benefit the whole of Arabian Toastmasters. I request all of you to please make use of this library which I'm sure more of you members will donate to it and I'm sure it will grow into a fantastic library. So, please, I request all of you to make use of this wonderful opportunity to read, read and read, thank you.
Thank you, Lord Ma'am, for your words of inspiration. And I thank Master of Ceremony for the opportunity and hand over back to you, Toastmaster Ravish.
Thank you, Toastmaster Rahul Agarwal, for the wonderful opening of our ATC Reading Corner. I urge all the fellow Toastmasters here to take the immense benefit of the rich treasure given by our legacy, our own Toastmasters, thank you. Well, fellow Arabians, moving further with the agenda. Well, let me ask you, do you all know what benefits lies in debating? Really? Well, let me highlight something. Well, debating helps you to develop the essential critical thinking skills, the ability to make reasoned and well-thought-out arguments in addition to questioning the evidence behind a stance or a conclusion. As the world has already recognized that the leaders of the futures are ex-debaters. Debate teaches how to pursue, how to present clearly and how to connect with an audience. Exactly the skills the businesses nowadays look in their human resources and the future leaders. As the Toastmasters, we always love to be part of any debate and that's the reason today we have again organized our all-time head, Great Arabian Debate. To present this most awaited part of an educational session, I take the privilege to humbly invite a very enthusiastic and a passionate Toastmaster for same. She is our Area Sixty-Nine Director, a clinical psychologist, an IP practitioner, a certified life coach, a corporate trainer for the past twenty years. She has worked in various capacities in the Toastmasters actively for the past five years. So, as a DLC Twenty Twenty-One Vice Chair, she is the Founder President of the NISA Toastmaster Club and she is presently working in IASJ as a School Counselor and an active member in social service. Yes, please help me welcome to our debate master, Toastmaster Shanti Rekha, onto the virtual stage. Toastmaster Shanti Rekha, the stage is yours.
Thank you, thank you, thanks a lot, Master of Ceremonies, Toastmaster Ravish for those beautiful words. Respect the chief guest, Hamid sir, leaders and valued guests, good evening. Well, let me start with a simple question, how many of you debate with your spouses? And how many times a day? Yes, we all, over many times, over many points. Today, what to cook and where to go, etc., etc., etc. We are all good debaters, as our MOC said, we really are very good debaters. Sometimes we win and sometimes husband win, depending upon the situation. Dear fellow Toastmasters, I cordially invite you to the Great Arabian Toastmaster Debate Contest, which was always been the talk of the town and today... We're all good debaters. As our MOC said, we really are very good debaters. Sometimes we win and sometimes husband win depending upon the situation. Dear fellow Toastmasters, I cordially invite you to the Great Arabian Toastmaster Debate Contest, which was always been the talk of the town and today's debate also is no different. Debate or debating is a method of argument. Disputes, conflicts may be settled by debate. Before I begin, I will briefly explain the rules for the benefit of audience. Rule number one, there will be two rounds. The first round, prepare speech round. And the second round, rebuttal round. In the first round, each speaker will get three minutes to present the case. The speaking order will be, the first one from Team A, the second speaker from Team B, and then it repeats. The team leader will present first in the first round. Green light will be indicated at two minutes, yellow light at two minutes thirty seconds, and red light at the end of three minutes and will continue till the speaker stops. The second round will be the rebuttal round in which each speaker will get two minutes to present the case. In the rebuttal round, the team leader will wrap up the speech towards the end. The team leader in the rebuttal round will get one minute extra for conclusion. That means total three minutes for the team leader of each team. After the round one, there will be five minutes for discussion in the respective breakout room. Winner will be based on voting. Best debater from each group, that is Group A and Group B and the best team. Round one will start with team supporting. Round two will start with the opposite team. Contestants, please note, there will be no disqualification with respect to time. So without further ado, let me welcome, join me welcome the teams who are going to debate. Before that, I request our president to declare a topic for debate and formally open the house to debate. Our President, Toastmaster Shetel.
Dear Arabians, so are we all ready for the Great Arabian Debate? Okay, now let me unbox the secret of Great Arabian Debate topic. The topic is, yes, the topic is resolve. What's important beauty or brains? Resolve what important beauty or brains? Now the debate, the debate house is open. Back to you Debate Master, Toastmaster Shanti Rekha.
Thank you, thank you. So dear friends and debaters, the topic is now open for debate. Team A will be for the concept that beauty is important. The contestants, the speakers for Team A, Toastmaster Avilaash, team leader, Toastmaster Anjali, Toastmaster Anup and Toastmaster Aritya. Team B will be on the topic that brains is important. Team B has the staff, Toastmaster Mohammed Ashik, team leader, Toastmaster Abit Khan, Toastmaster Harshita and Toastmaster Arun Vasan. Dear fellow Toastmasters, are you ready to start? Yes, so let's get started. Please join me in welcoming the first speaker, the team leader from Team A, that is Toastmaster Avilaash to speak for the concept, beauty is important.
Madam President, respected Chief Guest Sait sir, dignitaries of Toastmasters fraternity, Madam Debate Master, fellow Toastmasters and my dear friends, good evening to all. Today's topic is straight question, beauty or brain, which is more important to us? The answer is also simple and strange, which we all know except some people sitting in my opponent list. Before going to that replay, let me explain the literary meaning of these two words, beauty and brain. Brain refers to the intelligence of a person in this context. And beauty, the meaning of beauty is the quality which gives us immense pleasure and mental satisfaction to our mind. So anything, any quality which gives us immense pleasure and mental satisfaction is counted as beauty. It can be from sensory manifestations like color, sound, shape. And in human beings, it also includes the attitude, behavior and personality of a person. We all know in today's world, when we say that a person is beautiful, it not only means the external beauty of a person. It also means the internal beauty, the person, how he behaves in the society, how kind he is, how gentle he is, his loyalty, all these factors culminate together to find his personality. And we tell, we conclude him as a beautiful person. He has got a beautiful mind, we say. He has got a beautiful soul, we say. And fellow Toastmasters, what more is important to us in this present world other than a beautiful mind? Without a beautiful mind, nothing is more important, not even intelligence. Can you imagine about the hackers who are the most intelligent people in this world who are hacking the complete computer system around the world? They are considered as one of the most intelligent people and are they doing good to the society? No, why? The reason is simple, they don't have a beautiful mind. What about terrorists? Are they not intelligent? But they are killing innocent people here. What about robbers and thieves? Are they not intelligent? But the difference is they don't have a beautiful mind, fellow Toastmasters. Actually, this debate ends here. There is no more things to debate, no more things to argue. What more you want than a beautiful mind? Other than that, there is no other things important in this life, not even intelligence. Because if you have intelligence and if you don't have a beautiful mind, it is destructive to the world. It is like giving the nuclear power to terrorists. Because the intelligence is the acquiring of knowledge and application of knowledge. And if you don't have the right mindset, beautiful mind, then you will not apply this knowledge in the right direction. And it can be destructive to this world and that is what we are seeing around the world. So beauty is the most important thing in this world other than anything else and especially intelligence. Over to you, Madam Contest Chair.
Wow, thank you for that speech. Now please help me, the first speaker, the team leader from Team B, Toastmaster Ashik, to open the case for their topic. Toastmaster Ashik, the virtual stage is all yours.
Dear President, dear guests and Debate Master, and my fellow opponent leader with his incredible brain, he has formed wonderful argument. Congratulations, not with the beauty. And my fellow brainy Toastmasters, good evening to all of you. I'm here with my team members to prove beyond doubt, brain is important more than beauty. That's why there was a famous quote, beauty is nothing without a brain. At the end, I definitely know my opponent will also agree with me. Let me spell out my argument. A person who is brain dead is legally considered dead. His body has no use without a brain, even it is so beautiful. This proves brain is vital for human life and you don't need beauty to exist in life. Do you know why brain is so important? It has a two side, one is left logical reasoning and analytical and numbers and all. And the right side is creativity, expression, emotional intelligence, imagination and innovation. That's why today we enjoy, because the brain today we have, today we have in our world, doctors and engineers and actors and accountant and lawyers, all are for the prosperity of the world they are working towards. And it's so beneficial country and for the humanity, not because their beauty. Further, we are seeing interesting movies because of the creativity of the director. And furthermore, we are inventing vaccines for the last so many years like polio, smallpox, now including Corona because the brain is more important, the brain gives a solution. Let me ask my opponent team a question, how can you imagine our life without a brain? Even you cannot recognize the beauty with your senses without a brain. This is enough to prove the importance of brain more than beauty. Brain interpret the information received by five senses, hearing, touching and smelling and seeing. Let me tell another one point, where do you find all the solution to our problem? It is only from the brain we get solution to our problem. But the beauty always create conflicts, competition, comparison, anxiety and sadness. Brain unites people with logical persuasion and bring people out of sadness. Let me conclude by saying, today world needs brain, not beauty, to recognize the value of human being and find solution for our environment. And my team member shall shed light on our stand. Let me conclude by my initial argument, brain is better than beauty. As brain lasts forever, beauty is an illusion and fade away. We have, by repeat, brain is more important than beauty. Over to your Debate Master.
Thank you, thank you, Toastmaster Ashik. Now I think the team leaders have pulled up the stocks. Let us see what the team members are going to do. I would like to thank the speaker for the speeches. Now, welcome the second speaker, Toastmaster Anjali from Team A. Toastmaster Anjali, the virtual stage is all yours.
Thank you. And I can oppose from the beginning itself by defining what is beauty. Like an old saying, beauty lies in the eyes of the beholder. And beauty provides peace and tranquility to a person. That's why spiritually enlightened soul is considered beautiful. God is beautiful and he loves beauty. This means that God blesses for the beauty that bring out about through our good efforts. God has given us beauty throughout the nature with mountains, valleys, rivers and many more. We all choose these beautiful places that makes our mind calm and in order to get positive thoughts. Beautiful places enhances with its beauty to enjoy ourselves. We all at least see for God's grace to make our life beautiful. And in order to say that is a well spent day, we have to have beautiful memories and we capture these memories and for future memory too. We all wish to be loved by others and make our life beautiful. We need to have positive thoughts. So our inner beauty also helps to gain this positive thoughts. That is if we have good thoughts, good positive vibes and good beautiful mind, then only we can have a beauty in ourselves. When a person is engaged in something, if he really like, that is if he like do with something with his own likeness, then only it can make something beautiful, that is even creativity what just mentioned. Creativity needs brain but still we need to have a beautiful mind to make our creation a better one. Then we feel very much happy when something that is that we does with our mind, beautiful. A person with inner beauty is being reflected when he gets something, that is if he gets something what he likes the most, it can reflect on his face, that is the inner beauty as well as outer beauty is reflected on a person. Thus, that is the person who get and the person who has given has got a positive energy. This helps in brain development too. Thus, beauty in and around a person helps to develop his influence and use it in a right way. But beauty is more important. And always we try to end up our day with beautiful thoughts and this gains us a positive energy. Thank you.
Great, wow, beautiful things from beautiful people, from beautiful debaters. Right, I would like to welcome the second speaker, Toastmaster Abit Khan from Team B.
Good evening, Toastmasters. As other speakers have said that beauty is more important, but I would say that without oxygen, there is no life, person cannot live. So without brain, beauty is immaterial. Undoubtedly, brain has a dominance to rule the world in comparison to the beauty. Beauty has no value. I would like to give you some examples for that. Now, during this pandemic, many of our friends and families are alive. You know why? Because brain has given them vaccine, not the beauty. Now we are debating on this, some topics on this club meeting and we have started virtually to connect. You know why this has happened? Why this is possible? Because of brain. Brain has invented the internet, brain has invented the hardware and because of that we are conducting today's meeting. There is no role of beauty. I have seen many person in my personal life, from my childhood, wherein they were very beautiful. But when they grown and when they tried to get success, I felt that, I realized that, I witnessed that, that only those people have succeeded in their life who were having brain rather than the beauty. You all know the famous actors, Mr. Nawajun Dean Siddhki, is an Indian actor. He is looked like an ordinary man. He went to many auditions and he was rejected. But due to his brain, due to his work, due to his hard work, he got succeeded. And made this possible that beauty doesn't play any role in any person's success. If we take the another example, we are having, we had an our beloved ex-president Abdul Kalam Azad, who has given us a nuclear power and made a country very powerful. But if you see his looks, he was very ordinary person. He has also used his brain to get the success. So there are many examples, even though if we give the examples to our kids, we only talk about the leaders and the persons who have contributed to this mother earth, mother earth with the help of their brain, not because of the beauty. Gandhi ji and many other leaders have used their brains, not the beauty. Over to you Debate Master.
Thank you, thank you, brainly.com, Abit Khan, beautiful words, excellent. Ladies and gentlemen, I guess the heat is building up. Relax, we have more speakers and arguments are getting convincing like anything. Right, let's welcome our third speaker, Toastmaster Anup from Team A. Toastmaster Anup, the virtual stage is all yours.
Madam President, respected dignitaries, Debate Master, dear Arabians and my worthy opponents, good evening. Thank you, Toastmaster Ashik and Abit Khan for giving an anatomy lesson. There is no life without brain. So I'm asking you, if there is a life without a kidney or do you have any life without your lungs or heart? Do you have any life? Man, forget about this anatomy. We are not here to describe about anatomy. We are describing something about beautiful mind, beauty. Again, the vaccine, we got vaccine because of brain. We are sitting here because of the virtual meeting because of brain. I'm telling you, is it because of brain? Be frank, man. Is it because of brain? Brain or intelligence is a sharp weapon. If it is used correctly, it is very good. If it is used badly, it is a destruction. As Ablash told, again I'm telling you, with a beautiful mind, with a positive mind, with the development that that mind with that brain will lead you to some greater extent. But if you have a negative mind with a destroying mind, this lead to a But if you have a negative mind with a, with a, with a destroying mind, this lead to a something disastrous. So please understand, we are here not to discuss about anatomy, we are here to discuss what is more important. Dear worthy opponent, let me ask you a simple question, be frank, be frank here, you can unmute, please be frank. I believe most of us have got married. So when you, when you started looking for a spouse, what was your first criteria? Tell me here, huh? What you're giving them an equation, mathematical equation to solve, I want to check the brain power. But be, be, be frank man, huh? Or you want them to have a quantum physics? Or, or you want to do some interview, technical round interview to check the, what is this? What is this? Huh? The first thing with or without your knowledge, you will see the physical beauty, that is the thing. Then what is the second thing? Second thing you see the inner beauty, the humbleness, the politeness, the humility, the kindness, the care. That's the, that is the internal beauty, right? That is how you get attracted. But then okay, second thing, most of us have a children, what do you want? You want our children to be like Einstein or Newton, Newtonian physics? Man, we want our children to be a wonderful citizen, a beautiful citizen, a mind with a constructive mind, not a destructive mind. A beautiful mindset. See, we want our children to be, to have a very good mindset. We want our spouse to have a beautiful mindset, everything. But when comes to debate, I will say, brain is more important, anatomy, brain, everything is brain. Or what brain, if you're talking about brain, I will talk about kidney also, kidney also more important. What is this man? We are not talking about the anatomy. Please understand, this debate is very clear, very clear. Without beautiful mind, brain is nothing. I, I agree, brain in the terms of intelligence. I agree, intelligence is important, no, we are not disagreeing that. But what is, the debate is, what is more important? The more important, the word, the more emphasize the beautiful, the beauty mind, the beautiful mind is important. So beautiful mind is much, much, much more than a brain. Over to contestant, thank you.
Thank you, thank you Toastmaster Anup. I just used words in my script, that is heat is generating, literally heat was there. Great, now let's welcome our third speaker, Toastmaster Harshita from Team B. Toastmaster Harshita, the virtual stage is all.
Thank you. Dear fellow Toastmasters and distinguished guests, good evening to all of you. I'm here with my team members to express my views on the importance of brain than beauty. Health is the first and the greatest blessings and to monitor it strategically. Brain is a control center. Beauty is impermanent, it deteriorates with age and time. Whereas brain, in the other hand, it improves, grows with age, thus gains wisdom and experience. Brain has a crucial role in all the professions. Whether it be with infrastructure, medical, accounting, teaching, digital technology. Which is getting upgraded to many more new features and functions. Do you know all this is how it's possible? It's just because of the ideas from the brain which has led to the comfort of the human life. In order to apply the beauty in individual, it's only the brain which is going to help make decisions regarding one's appearance. It's a well-known fact that a brain has an impact on a personality. And this is the reason why at national and international beauty pageants and effort is being made to assess the participants' intelligence. By asking them the same questions, but is this the individuals whose, one individual whose representation of thoughts. And opinions leaves the people's abstract. A person with a favorable mental disposition has a long-lasting positive influence on others. And the brain has an upper say over the beauty. The inner beauty of the person can make one succeed, but the external looks alone cannot excel in life. Brain undoubtedly has the strongest domination to rule the world in comparison to the external outlook and beauty. Thus, I conclude my views by saying that brain is definitely important than beauty. So thank you, over to debate master.
Thank you, thank you Toastmaster Harshita. Now, dear fellow Toastmasters, let's welcome our last speaker, Toastmaster Aditya from Team A to put his case. Toastmaster Aditya, the virtual stage is all yours.
Thank you madam. Uh let me start by a quote, an intelligence devoid of beauty is worthless. Fellow worthy opponents, a beautiful evening to one and all. Looks are the first impression an individual has of a person's value. We seek a person who has an attractive personality and good looks. Whether it's a personal secretary to a back office manager, a reporter to an anchor or a friend. In other words, beauty is necessary on the inside as well as on the outside. According to a study by the University of Florida, employees considered more attractive earned higher salaries. And rose up to the corporate ladder faster than their less attractive counterparts. Speaking of beauty in society, let me mention that three point six billion people actively use social media. My worthy opponents might be using, uh might be very active on social media as well. But a total of seven hundred million of them use the AR effects on Facebook and Instagram alone. The AR effects are the filters which we choose. But why do we choose filters? Obviously, the answer lies to look beautiful, to be, to look appealing. Two hundred million daily active users play or use the lenses every day to enhance their appearance. Four hundred thousand creators have released over one point two million effects. And more than one fifty creator accounts have hit one billion views each. If still my worthy opponents don't get the point, I believe they need a little bit of internal beauty. The importance of beauty has become so great that even the platform of today's meeting Zoom has a touch of my appearance feature. That gives a smoother appearance and you bet my worthy opponents are looking beautiful and smooth. Now let's talk about the beauty's influence. The beauty and the personal care market projects are surpassed one twenty eight point seven billion by twenty thirty. More than the current GDP of one forty countries including Kuwait and Oman. The Barbie brand was approximately four forty million US dollars, twice the approximate size of the Rubik's Cube market. With the underlying fact that the Rubik's Cube is used by all, all age groups, but the dolls by only small little girls. The Barbie has stood as a test of time, became a cultural icon around the world. It has two million followers on Instagram. Imagine the effect, the influential effect of it. Additionally, studies have claimed that the good-looking men and women have high IQs. Men who are physically attractive have IQs an average of thirteen point six points above the norm while women's were about eleven point four points above the higher. Now finally, by uh contradicting more the points of my first worthy opponent, uh Toastmaster Ashik sir. The doc, who mentioned that the doctors and engineers uh about the brains used by doctors and engineers in the times of the unprecedented times of COVID nineteen. But I guess he forgot that the actors or the actresses who played a major role in creating the influential drive among people. Or the influence, influence the people about the whereabouts of the COVID nineteen. In miss uh talking about the beauty pageant contests also, where the people are judged not only based on the basis of in, internal beauty. But they are just primarily on the basis of external beauty. And they are considered as to be the most influential people among everyone who have the, who have the capacity to drive a force among the people. Thus, by this I conclude my speech by saying that undoubtedly, beauty is far more important than brain. Over to you.
Thank you, thank you Toastmaster Aditya. Now, dear fellow Toastmasters, let's welcome our last speaker, Toastmaster Arun from Toastma, uh from Team B. And this is the, he is the last speaker for the first round. Toastmaster Arun Vasan, the floor is yours.
One in eight people in US are contemplating to do commit suicide. And if, if you, I think you can guess the reason why they are doing so, respected guest side sir. And my fellow Toastmasters, distinguished guests, along with all of you. Why are we pressurizing everyone to look beautiful? Why are so many gyms being opened? Why are being so many beauty salons being open? Why are being so many gym instructors coming up? Why is that there are so many dieticians coming up? Why is there so much weight loss pills coming up? Why is so many smoking centers coming up? It's only because people like this, my worthy opponents, are praising the beauty so much that they are pressurized, they are biased. They are forced to go into all these stupid nonsense things and spend their valuable time, money, effort. And come back rejected and then start committing all these stupid acts like suicide. Do we really want to do? They were talking about the mind part. I really thought that I was pretty confused whether they are in which team. Are they in my team or in the beauty thing was a little pretty misleading for me. When I, they went a little deeper, I thought that what is the difference between me and an animal? If there is something is different, it is because I have the power of discrimination. I know what is right and what is wrong. Now how do I get it? I get it only because I'm an intelligent person, I use that power. The which gives me that, you know, that little bit of uh, 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 an advantage. And I use this advantage to get that beautiful mind. It doesn't come to you automatically, we need to work for it. And how would you work if you don't know how to rationalize, how to reason or how to respond? All these efforts are a must if you want to do. Let's take the case of history. In history, we will remember, let's say Isaac Newton, we'll remember Faraday or we'll remember uh all the, the, the. Well, let's say the inventors, but do we remember for their beauty? No, I, I don't think so. It is their contribution which has brought all the changes in the society and all the benefits that we are getting. Take the case of Thomas Alva Edison. He had, he just went to the, you know, the gym and built up his muscles and then, you know, what, what, what effect or what contribution would have? Nothing, it would have been a total flop and total zero for us. But instead, you know, he gave us this beautiful light and we are all living such a glorious life. And there is this talk about this movie, you know, forty-two movies have flopped in the last two years. It has been drastic loss for all the people who have invested money. If beauty was so successful, why did those forty-two movies flop? What was the reason? They should have definitely made money. If, if, if the mute movie is, are always about to succeed. Let's take case of all the khans, whatever movies they come, it should be running for like thousand days or two thousand days. But that is not the case, we know very well. It is the content in it which makes the difference. It is the matter in it which makes the difference and for that we need to use our mind. I don't know such a simple thing, my worthy opponents are just, I think they're pretending to, you know, ignore saying that, no, 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 no. Life is something else, I'll probably live with that. So my only advice to all of you is that please, I beg you, stop going to all these gyms. Stop taking all these diets, please don't believe them, they are only pressurizing, they are marketing their products in fact. And stay away from them and please invest on yourself, invest on your education, try to upgrade, try to update, learn new courses. I am sure you'll be happy. Back to you debate master.
Thank you, thank you Toastmaster Arun Vasan for those beautiful words and some words of wisdom and suggestions too. Great. So dear fellow Toastmasters, we have come to the end of the first round. I request the Zoom master to please send the contestant to the respective breakout room for five minutes per discussion. And then we will be back for rebuttal round, which is going to be more powerful, more power-packed than this. Zoom master, just try to identify Team A, Team B. And the contestants, please help the Zoom master for your rooms, for your respective rooms.
Uh yes ma'am, we are moving. I'm doing that, give me two minutes. Now group one will be moving. The group one, what request, right, to move into the room. Now for group two.
This statement, decision-making power comes with the analysis, critical thinking. And critical thinking is only possible when you use your brain. Generally, the good decision in the organization or in any country is taken by doing the analysis. Analysis is one of the major steps to take the decision. If you receive the information, if you collect the information, if you do not analyze that information and pass the information, then it will become a blunder. And you know, blunder always brings disharmony, blunder always brings loss to the country and loss to the company. So analysis is one of the major part and which is only obtained with the help of this brain. The second part, one of our opponents said that terrorists are using their brain and they are killing other innocent people. That also I disagree. Terrorists never use their mind, they are the blind followers. They follow the leaders of their uh stupid leaders. Whatever they say, they just uh listen and they follow. They never use their mind. If they would have used their mind, they would never uh kill any innocent person in this world. So terrorists are not using their mind, which was totally wrong. As far as the hackers, they also don't use mind. Because they just use their beauty, uh, uh, other part of their, their skills, but they're not using their mind. And because of that, our society is humming. So that's my point, how about our opponents. Uh, the, the, this is my opposition for the two points of my opponent, decision-making and hackers and terrorist actions. So I believe that brain has always ahead rather than the beauty. Thank you. Over to you debate master.
Thank you, thank you Toastmaster Abhik. Now let's listen the first speaker, Toastmaster Anjali from Team A. Who will be rebelling against Team B. Toastmaster Anjali, the virtual stage is yours.
Okay, I am asking one question, can you be genuine that have you all dressed up well in this meeting? Doesn't this add beauty to this meeting? Well, it adds beauty. Then I can ask another question that as already mentioned, Abdul Kalam, uh Dr. FJ Abdul Kalam then he had mentioned about Mahatma Gandhi. They are all good people, they are all having beautiful minds too, they are not only having good brain. And they showed their creation with their beautiful minds and Abdul Kalam, as we all know that he has done many things. There is many beautiful things that in order to, that is he had uh positive thoughts and positive vibes. And he has given many motivational uh things that makes our mind and children's mind very, very beautiful. Then as already uh told also, oxygen is important. That is oxygen uh. Where we can see trees now because of our intelligence and brain, we have, we have been building many new things and many new developments are coming. Does oxygen exist now? I guess it's less now, we have to, uh in future we have to uh purchase for oxygen. That is now we are, uh how we are purchasing water, we have, maybe we have to purchase oxygen for future. Then that's all.
Good, thank you Toastmaster Anjali. Good Lord, now the speeches are really getting food for thought at the time. Right, the second speaker from Team B is Harshita. Toastmaster Harshita, the virtual floor is yours.
Thank you debate master. Uh, spare Toastmasters, uh so one of the statements passed is basically. That uh Barbie dolls basically is considered as like beauty. But the thing is that there is one quote which is being stated by John Ruskin that says that remember that the most beautiful things like even Barbie dolls. In the world, they are just, they are just the most useless things. So when you're talking about a like person with this glitter and all this, which are blessed with beauty. Uh, these can just dazzle, dazzle, you know, with just for few minutes and just for few moments at most. And, and as soon as this happens, a person is no longer visible. So only the thing is that the thoughts which are there is just stays for long. And it just result like, it's just a result like people like even uh Mother Teresa. So they have left an everlasting mark on the society like their excellent deeds and behaviors. These have been marked. And uh people honor them by calling them uh Mother respectively. So physical beauty when we say all about this beautiful people is just only superficial. It is not coming to the reality that base qualities. It is not coming to the reality that base qualities even like jealousy, arrogance is just beneath them, which is not coming outside. So I just want to just give my opinions on it. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Toastmaster Harshita. Now the second speaker from team A is Toastmaster Anup. Toastmaster Anup, the floor is yours.
Anup, you need to unmute.
Again, madam presidents, respected dignitaries, debate masters, dear, dear Arabians and worthy anatomical opponent. Good evening. Dear anatomical opponent, please, please, I request you to kindly read the topic. Did the topic say something about physical beauty? Did the topic say something about your physical brain? Why you are sticking on it? We are not talking about the physical brain. I have left side brain, right side brain, left dust that. Did we talk about, we have neurological, this is not a topic. The topic is very clear, beauty. What is beauty? Okay, let me ask you one question. Which is physical? The brain is physical. The mind is a physical one? No, right? The mind controls the brain or brain controls the mind? Yeah, be honest here. Mind controls the brain. That is a fact. Whether you believe it or not, mind controls the brain. The beautiful, let's see, mother's love. What do you say about mother's love? Beautiful, right? Mother's love is beautiful. Let me ask you the same question. The mother's love only for humans is beautiful? For anything, any animal, any organism, anything you take, mother's love is beautiful. So does it need brain, my dear friend? Does it need intelligence? Please understand, the beauty is not only exterior, exterior is also a beauty. But internal beauty, the topic is very clear, very clear. The topic was exactly, it is mentioned only the beauty or brains and which is more important. I'm, I totally agree. You know, the intelligence is important, no doubt. But the topic is, doesn't say that, the topic clearly says more important. So definitely, the internal beauty, the internal, the mindset, the positive mindset, my dear friends, that is more important. Without your beautiful mind, your intelligence is useless. Again, what I said from the beginning, with only with good mindset, with a mindset of dedication, love, kindness and care. With that mind and intelligence makes progress, otherwise it is destruction. The same thing in the, in the, 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 the machine gun in the hands of um uh in the hands of a protector or the hands of terrorists. The gun, this gun does its job, but which is in which hands makes a difference. Same thing, nuclear power plant, nuclear power plant, nuclear, nuclear can help to produce high power and nuclear can help to have nuclear bombs. So please understand, without positive mind, without good and beautiful mind, the intelligence is useless. And second thing, please come out of anatomical, anatomical world, come and think about the real brain. Okay, so without positive mindset, without beautiful mindset, the intelligence is completely useless. And over to debate master. Thank you.
Thank you, Toastmaster Anup for such beautiful clarification. Ah, friends, I think today we are all going to have a dream. We're going to dream what is important. Let's hope. Right, let's get, listen from the third speaker from team B, Toastmaster Arun Vasan. Toastmaster Arun Vasan, the virtual stage is all yours.
Thank you, my dear, what you open and for a moment, I thought it was a humorous speech because you started speaking about zoology. Suddenly you went to philosophy and then you went to management. I was getting really confused. Then you talk about mind, then you talk about brain, then you talk about beautiful mind. Then you talk about all these things. I think we are in for some serious discussion. Let me take one point of yours. You said that over marriage, you always look at your wives and whether if it's not beautiful, you'll marry or not. Now who creates all this pressure? It's people like you who go and tell that only beautiful girls should be married. And later we only know what is the end effect of it. Neither we get the beauty nor the peaceful part of it. We are totally lost on that account. But anyway, I'll give you some full marks for that, that yeah, we need to have that decision. See, in Hindi, the, you should take the literal translation of it and we call it as buddhi and manas. So we, you, it is like mind and then it comes the, the brain part, the buddhi part. And the brain part is always the superior one. The mind is only the inferior one. The mind has to control the brain part and only then you can take the right decision. Let's take a case of a startup, you know, a startup, what does it require these days? Just a simple idea is all that is required. And if you have, you know, a fantastic idea, you go about making millions and millions and how does it come? It doesn't come with a beautiful mind. You, you need to have that analytical thinking, you need to have that logical mind. You need to do the reality, you need to do your homework, you need to do your research. And then you come to, you talked about, yes, mother's love is perfectly correct. And that part I don't want to debate because I think somewhere we need to agree. So I will leave mothers out of this equation and leave that poor soul alone for this. And, and I'm sure she, for her, the kid is the most beautiful thing. I can probably support you on that. And if that thought comes, it's only because her rational mind heard that, the mind which at that point becomes totally blind, yes, it is only the love part which is come. You know, in order to develop all those qualities you taught, whether it is truth, whether it is peace, it is whether it's non-violence, whether it is right conduct or you name it, you need that mind, you need that sense control, you need to control your flow, you need to control your actions. And to control it, you need to have a good mind. You need to have a strong mind and then you'll be able to do it. With this, I'll close my argument. Back to you, debate master.
Thank you. Thank you, Toastmaster Arun Vasan for such intellectual arguments. Let's listen from third speaker from team A, Toastmaster Aditya. Toastmaster Aditya, the virtual stage is all yours.
Thank you, Madam Toastmaster. From childhood, we have studied about the theory that survival of the fittest, right? But I beg, as a team which were worried about the destructive mindset, was clearly depicted by Toastmaster Arun Vasan. Sir, he was talking about why we should not go to health institute, why we should not go to gym, why we should not focus on our health? I know this is aside the topic, but this has to be talked about. This is nothing but manipulation. This is nothing but false methodology. And this is due to the destructive mindset. And also he was only focusing on the external beauty throughout his speech. And now before, before my speech, he was talking about how it is very essential to bring about a change with the internal beauty. And thank you for supporting on us, on us, on that. And finally, also Toastmaster Arun Vasan sir talked about suicides in the USA. I really think he had to go that far for an example. How about we just talk about India? In India, every hour, there is a child who is dying due to peer pressure, due to uh the competition between minds and brains. If in a day, there are twenty-eight deaths, why do you have to go that far for an example for your topic? Coming to the third point, one of the worthy opponent talked about the organisms cannot survive without the brain. He, he really mentioned the word organism. By the way, let me give you an example, slime moles and organism that lives out without the brain, brains and still it's a very efficient organism who can really solve the mazes in the water with efficiency. And now talking about the professions which were also brought up, the doctors, the engineers and how they contribute to the world to the end of time of COVID era. Did we really forget the influential effects of the actors or the ones who are very paid highly just for the influential role? There might be some reason behind it, right? Now finally, I would like to thank Toastmaster Harshita Karli for really supporting us on our point by mentioning in her speech that internal beauty is a must and important. Finally, I would also raise a question before ending my speech that would you rather wake up a morning looking like Brad Pitt or Ashwarya Rai? Or would you rather wake up each morning to solve mathematical equation or do some engineering maths? Over to you, Toastmaster. Now, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Toastmaster Aditya. Now it's time to listen from our knowledgeable leaders of respective teams. Let's welcome the team leader from team B, Toastmaster Mohammed Aashik to put his points. Toastmaster Mohammed Aashik, the virtual stage is all yours.
Good evening, dear debate master and fellow guests. As I already told, as I already told all of you, the importance of brain and see our opponent's position. We are bringing so much of argument because of their brain, as I have told you. So the brain itself, they themselves has agreed that because of dream, the brain only they able to put forward a great argument. The brain, because the solution to our problem, there are listed so much of problems in the, each of their debaters of my worthy opponent. But I would say the, the other solutions are going to come. It's come from our own brain is give the solution. And one, one of my worthy opponent said, Dr. Abdul Kalam, I would say Dr. Abdul Kalam is famous for his brain, nothing else. He is not so beautiful. So you'd say, and another opponent said regarding the actors, you can see there are so many actors come and thrive and some will move, they will be nowhere today because they use, those who are successful actors are those who use their own brain, that is without no doubt. And attraction is always connected with beauty, yes. And decision-making is the rational thought and a law, when you use your brain, you come with a very strong decision-making, a right decision-making, you will arrive with use of a brain. Further, I would say, there, one, one of our worthy opponents said capturing beautiful moment. Today we have, through our brain invention, we had a camera which captures the beautiful moment in our life and be able to see it after so many generations even past. So let's say who decide, then after that, there are, there are multiple occasion, they are talking about the beauty and beauty. I would like to ask my worthy opponent, which decide, who decide the beauty? It's a brain decides the beauty because the brain, without brain, you cannot say which is beautiful and which is not. Because it able to sense and give the strong, the decision on which is beautiful and which is not. And good mindset is through, only through brain, nothing else, I would say. And one of our Toastmasters about, talked about the nuclear explosion, I would say nuclear explosion can be prevented only through brain, nothing, the beauty can't do anything about that. And destructing, destructive mindset can also be prevented through the brain with you using your brain properly. And therefore, I let me sum up, I strongly believe I've worth the opponent to accept that the brain is vital and is more important than beauty. So let me rest the case and handle back to our debate master.
Thank you, Toastmaster Aashik. Again, you all are putting me in confusion. What is important? Okay, that's really debate. Now let's welcome the last speaker from team A, the leader of team A, Toastmaster Abhilaj to put his point and rest the case. Toastmaster Abhilaj, the virtual stage is all yours.
Thank you, debate master. First of all, I am very happy to say that most of the points raised by us was not clearly argued by our opponents. Only thing what they were trying to do is manipulating, manipulating and making it, giving a false belief of the right things. The first and most important thing, one of the worthy opponent was telling about gym and health, we should not take care. Instead of that, he was telling, don't look for the beauty and go for the gym. If you are going to be, going in a gym and being healthy, this will extend your life. And then you will give more output to the society. So why he is telling that? Because he don't have the right mind. He has the brain to manipulate the people, but he was not telling the right thing. Because he don't have the right mindset. Another worthy opponent, Toastmaster Abid was aligning with us. He told terrorists are not using their mind. They are just blindly following their leaders. That is what we are also telling. They are intelligent people, but they are blindly following their leaders. Why? If they have the brain and if they are using it in the right direction with correct mindset, then they will come out of their leaders. They don't have the mind. Beautiful mind and beautiful soul is the need of the society. Another worthy opponent told that beautiful things are useless. Example, Barbie doll. If you go to her house and see how many beautiful things she is buying, actually we should be very genuine and uh correct way we have to talk, even in, even if we are talking in a debate. We all love beautiful things. We all like to buy material things which is, which are beautiful. That is the truth. But here they are telling that they don't like beautiful things. That is what I am telling. This is because they have the brain, but they don't have the correct mind, beautiful mind to tell the truth to our audience. This is the correct example of how a brain can, cannot help the society when their mind is corrupted. One final thing, let me tell you, there are two aspects here, beauty and brain. Brain can be measured. There are scientific methods to measure your brain. IQ level can be measured, but beauty lies on the eyes of the beholder, as he said. When you people are telling that to this leaders like Gandhi or namasiddhi, actors like namasiddhi and sudhika are ordinary people, we don't consider them as ordinary people. We feel that they are beautiful because it's our mindset. My mind is beautiful and I see beauty in them. If you are not able to see beauty in them, that is your problem. This is what we are telling. If you should have the right mindset, mind should be, have, mind should be beautiful to see beauty in others. And that only helps the society. Whatever brain if you are having, if you are sitting in an environment, totally destructive environment, whatever intelligence you are having, you cannot solve any problem. Why? You don't have the peace of mind. People say, I don't know how the peace of mind to solve today is the problem. I have seen in my company, the problems are critical and they lost their mind, they go home, take a sleep, go to a calm place. Then they give, then they come up with the solution because there the mind works. There is peacefulness for their mind, that time their mind was. And then only, actually mind is controlling everything, including brain. Who is having the control? That is important. Mind is having the control. Brain is just a tool, as my mate said. So in general, it is very clear that beautiful mind is important to everyone. And I know my worthy opponents also agree, but for the sake of debate, as I told in the beginning, this debate is entered in the, in the beginning stage itself. And now it is reinstated that only beautiful mind is important and brain is just a tool. Even if you see the life of Thomas Alva Edison or Isaac Newton, go to their life, dig their life, what happened to them? They are all beautiful people. We are telling that they are beautiful. Believe you are telling their look are not good. That is your problem. That is your concept of beauty. We are not telling that. And that beauty, their mindset to, you know, to, to find out new things in this world come from their experience. They have lot of experience, personal moments in their life, all that their mindset, that mindset to use the intelligence in the right way. So mindset, beautiful mind, that is the most important thing in this life. And I know the whole world agrees with this. Over to you, debate master.
Thank you. Thank you, Toastmaster Abhilaj for such a wonderful wrap-up. Both the leaders did an excellent job. Now, now after this, I'm going to debate with my husband to see whether beauty or brain. And depending upon his arguments, I'm going to serve the dinner. Great. So dear ladies and gentlemen, I hope you all have enjoyed the tough debate ever, beauty or brain. Now I request all of you to please vote for the best debater from each team and the best team. Zoom master, please launch the poll accordingly. I think on the screen you have debate team A and also the speakers wanted. And meanwhile, I want to sign off. That's the end of today's debate, Toastmaster debate, Arabian Toastmaster debate. I thoroughly enjoyed anchoring the show. Thanks a lot, VP Education, Toastmaster Ravish and President Toastmaster Shethal for giving this beautiful and rainy opportunity. Over to you, Toastmaster Ravish, our today's MOC.
Thank you, Toastmaster Shanti Nikkar. Indeed, a wonderful debate session conducted very well, impeccably. And that's, we keep the USP of the, our club anniversary meetings with the grand debates. I hope all of you have enjoyed, yes?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for this.
Yes, yes.
Yeah. I hope all team has voted so that we can continue with the further round.
Uh, no, we are yet to launch poll for the team B.
Sure. So let us keep this enthusiasm, the debates in the mind and let me wait for some time to get this poll added. Sure, so let us keep this enthusiasm, the debates in the mind and let me wait for some time to get this poll added.
Yeah, there is some technical issues, please give me two minutes to launch the other poll.
Okay, for the benefit of the team who has joined, uh, till the time the issue gets resolved, let us continue with the session. And you keep voting for the best debate team as well as the best debaters. Well, moving further with the agenda.
Yes, we have launched the poll for the Team B.
Yes, I request all, please keep voting for the best Team B. Madam President, with your permission, can I move in parallel?
Ah, yes, please move.
Thank you. Well, moving further for the agenda. Now it's time to also listen the words of the wisdom from a various esteemed dignitaries present here. Yes, whose words always instill the inspiration and guidance to Toastmaster fraternity. Moving is, let me call upon our distinguished Toastmaster, Shekhar Tivari. He is the immediate past president, past Division F Director. Welcome to you, sir, over to you.
Thank you, thank you so much, uh, Toastmaster Ravish for inviting me. I am thankful to DTM and Dr. Sheetal Agarwal. It's a great day and it is indeed, it is a great, great honor for me, ending this wonderful evening with the 19th anniversary of this wonderful ATC. So congratulations to each and every one for this wonderful 19 years of your Toastmaster journey. And definitely this club is a vibrant club and with tall leaders. And today, Dr. Hadib Hamid Sir presented this beautiful evening in a wonderful way. So I'm thankful to you all for inviting me. So it's a great honor again, I can say, and best wishes to one and all for the next coming years and to achieve more and more running service, to attend your so many anniversaries. Thank you, thank you, ma'am, thank you, Madam Sheetal, and thank you, Toastmaster Ravish, over to you.
Thank you, sir, thank you very much for your valuable advice, thank you.
Toastmaster Ravish, sorry to interrupt you. Now we are launching for the poll for the best team. So meanwhile, we can prepare the certificates.
Thank you, Madam President, for the update.
Please vote for the best team. The four team is the team supporting beauty and the against team is team supporting brains.
Well, meanwhile, the numbers keep on increasing for the voting participation. Let me continue with the, now let me call upon Toastmaster Martin, our past ATC President, to please share his thoughts on today's event. Mr. Martin.
Good evening, everyone, especially our chief guest, Madam President, MC and all fellow Toastmasters. One, good evening first of all. And thank you very much for giving me this opportunity, for inviting me to attend this wonderful celebration. It is indeed my pride and privilege to attend Arabian Toastmasters functions being a charter number of that club. When I talk about Arabian Toastmasters or even Toastmasters fraternity, I want to say, I had a perception that most of the things which I think will become correct and at least my wife will agree with me that. But from the beginning of Toastmasters, my perception, I started feeling that it's going wrong. When the club was about to start, our founder president when invited for forming the club, I thought it's like a normal club, entertaining club. So I happily agreed to join. But once I start saw the Toastmasters meeting and the way how it works, I understood, no, my perception was wrong. And I cannot continue in that club because my nature, my way is not good fit for or the public speaking and all is not my cup of tea. So I indeed tried to went out or ran out of the Toastmastering. But like veteran Toastmasters like Nandu Ganabadi, Suresh and all brought me back. And when I started attending the club, I realized my perception was wrong. It fits me, I can learn a lot, I can improve. And I started improving and my life in Toastmasters becoming very, very good. But at that time, I thought becoming a DTM. First of all, the first DTM born during my presidential time, that was DTM Suresh Kumar became a DTM. And that was, I think, first DTM in Jubail. Uh, later I understand my perception was wrong. So many DTM's born through Arabian and other clubs. Again, uh, rising and getting finishing off of many, many Toastmasters club in Arabian. I have seen rise and fall of Toastmasters clubs. Then I thought, this is not going to last for long. Maybe after some years, when the enthusiastic visionary leaders and all are gone from the country, then this club, including Arabian is going to fade out and becoming a history. But I found, no, the club is going ahead with more and more, achieving lots of laurels year after year. And later, we can say finally, when the COVID came, I thought this is going to be the end of this Toastmastering and no more the club activities will take place. But the way virtual meetings are being conducted such a professional way and the way this function itself is being conducted, I have totally changed my perception and now my perception is it's a never uh, never ending process, like a learning process, Toastmastering also and especially Arabian Toastmasters. As long as this world exists, the Arabian also will exist. And for that, I should congratulate all the past Star Wars and the present and those who are year after year leading the club to new, you know, new higher levels. So I take this opportunity to congratulate all and wish you all a happy anniversary. Over to MC.
Thank you very much, sir, for sharing your valuable thoughts. As you correctly mentioned, as a Toastmaster, once Arabian will always be an Arabian. Thanks again for sharing your thoughts, sir. Now among the other dignitaries present here, let me call upon DTM Oman Thomas to share his thoughts. DTM Oman Thomas, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mousi, for giving me this opportunity. Madam President, Dr. Sheetal, Chief Guest, Dr. Seid Amitsar, fellow Arabians and guests, good evening. I'm really proud to say that I'm an Arabian. Arabian never compromise on quality. And today, if you see, this whole program, the team has managed to do it within a short period of time. President herself and our VP membership were not in town. They were traveling and reached Jubail very recently. And everything was arranged very nicely and I congratulate the whole team for making this anniversary a wonderful one. I'm sure as time goes, we will have our regular meetings, physical meetings. So that will help improve our club climate and more members will join. Of course, those who are joining from different regions, we'll have to include them by having some online meetings also. So let's hope our journey is going to be a wonderful one. And I congratulate the team for putting up a great show. Thank you very much, back to you, MOC, Toastmaster Ravish.
Thank you, sir, thank you very much for a word of wisdom. And yes, as you truly said, the legacy, this can only continue with the proper mentorship and the leadership of the seasoned Toastmasters like you. So that's possible with the guidance and support of yours and the team, sir. Thank you very much. Now moving further in the dignitaries, let me also call upon our distinguished Toastmaster, Suresh Kumar, to present his thoughts. DTM Suresh, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Mr. Master Sumiris, for the kind opportunity. For me, uh, the Arabian anniversary is always a moment of celebration. And I, it was, it is a matter of great pride for me, for being a part of this great club and, and have been, have witnessed great growth amongst the members and a club by as itself. We went, the moments that we spent in Arabian over the last 19 years is phenomenal and will stand with us in our, be etched in our hearts forever. We've had great moments, we've built great friendships and we've, all that, all that we see today or what, what I am today is some total of all those evaluations, those table topics and international speech, those vying with each other to for the beautiful trophy is what has made and defined who I am today. So I'm so great, immensely grateful for Arabians for actually making me what I am and helping me to carve myself out to the person that I wanted to be. And it's all these moments, it's all these priceless moments that will actually stand us in good stead as we grow and as we grow older and move on to different stages of our lives. We miss the Arabian Toastmasters club so much. And definitely when I visit some of the clubs, I realize where, where, where we stand as Arabians, which is far ahead of many other clubs in every part of the world. I'm so immensely thankful for being, for, for the thoughtful idea of the president to invite my beloved teacher and so who so, so much so close to us and as a family, who actually made a difference to us in our lives in Jubail for having come here. Thank you so much, sir, for, it's so late in the night and you're still with us to be with, to enjoy our, our friendship and fellowship of the Arabian Toastmasters club. Thank you so much for this opportunity and I look forward to be interacting with all the Arabians. And I also assure you that distance and time doesn't matter so long as it's, it's virtual. I will also extend my support in any way that I can to the extent that is possible. Thank you so much for all the support and help. And thank you for all those fine moments that the club has given to me and stay here, thank you.
Thank you very much, sir, thank you very much. And yes, as you truly said, then the Toastmasters, we have not developed only the professionally, but although on the personal levels. Yes, and that's the beauty of this Toastmasters and particularly the Arabian Toastmasters club. So thank you very much, sir. Thank you. Well, we, we have heard about the word of wisdom for the many dignitaries and this keeping continuing. But yes, the essence remains the same of the Toastmasters. Well, moving further with the agenda. Now, let us enter into the most awaited session of the time which we all are waiting for. Yes, as the results of our great Arabian debate. So are you all ready for it? Yeah. Sorry. No, you must appreciate that we all have witnessed the beauty of the thoughts as well as the brains put behind those thoughts in this session. Each argument was thought provoking, convincing to his best and had its own weightage. But now, it's time to see to which side this weighing scale has shifted as per the voting results. So for same, let me again invite our debate master, Toastmaster Shanti Rekha for announcing the debate results. Toastmaster Shanti Rekha, the virtual stage is yours.
Thank you, Toastmaster Ravish. I think we all are eagerly waiting for the results. So let me share the screen and let me share the results. Before we go ahead with the results, I would like to present the certificates for participation. The first in no particular order, Toastmaster Abhilaj, Toastmaster Arun Vasin, Toastmaster Anjali, Toastmaster Anup, Toastmaster Aditya, Toastmaster Abid Khan, Toastmaster Harshita. Now let's have the results. Are you, are you ready? The best, the best person, the best debater from Team A goes to Toastmaster DTM Oman Thomas. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Right, Toastmaster Abhilaj from Team A. Great, now let's see from Team B, Toastmaster Ashik. I guess both the leaders, got it, great job. Now, any guesses which team, beauty or the brain? Any guesses from audience? I know you people have voted, so must be knowing which one, but then still. Now, dear friends, dear fellow Toastmasters, we have how many hands? We have two hands, left hand, right hand. How many eyes we have, two eyes? If anybody says which is important to you, whether left eye or right eye, left hand or right hand, I would say both. So that goes with our results too. Both the team, the Team A and Team B got the best, it was literally 50% to Team A and 50% to Team B. That suggests both that brave beauty and the brain are equally important. So thanks a lot, great job, great job with all the contestants and it was really a great, great show. Over to you, Toastmaster of the day, MOC, Toastmaster Ravish.
Thank you, Toastmaster Shanti Rekha, for wonderfully conducting this session. And yes, indeed, we all loved it and enjoyed it and looking forward for many such sessions in our upcoming, upcoming anniversaries. Thank you for the eminent work done by you. Well, now owing the results, now let us move forward with the agenda. Yes, one of the more, one of more important session. Hello, Toastmasters, as you know, there are various pathways in a Toastmasters which will help you to build your skills as a strategic leader, right? I think there are 11 pathways. Well, to facilitate the journey, each path is made up of five levels that increases with the complexities. Now this pathway program is designed in a way so that you are always building on what you have learned in the previous level. Right? So certainly, each level completion is a milestone and is worth recognizing the efforts of the Toastmaster who achieved that milestone. So let's come together to motivate and share the happy moments of the achievements by our Toastmasters. And to lead this session, I have the privilege to humbly invite our own club president, Toastmaster Sheetal Agarwal into the virtual platform. And to leave this session, I have the privilege to humbly invite our own club president, Toastmaster Sita Agarwal into the virtual platform. Toastmaster Sita Agarwal, the stage is all yours.
Please unmute president.
Thank you, Toastmaster Ravish. Now, I request our chief guest, Hamid Sir, and our past president, Toastmaster Martin, to join me to felicitate the, and appreciate the level completions. Now, please allow me to share my screen. Our own Vice President, Public Relation, Toastmaster Arun Vasan completed his level three in the dynamic leadership. Congratulations, Toastmaster Arun Vasan. The Toastmaster Vijaya Lakshmi Udaykumar, she completed level three in the leadership development. And level four in the leadership development. Congratulations, Toastmaster Vijaya Lakshmi Udaykumar. Our immediate past president, Toastmaster Agul Shankar, he completed the level five in the dynamic leadership. With this, he completed one level, one pathways of 50% journey done to achieve his DTM designation. Congratulations, Toastmaster Agul Shankar. Thank you, Hamid Sir, and thank you, Toastmaster Martin, to join me to appreciate our level achievements, thank you.
Yeah, congratulations to all these achievers. Congratulations to all the, all the achievers and thanks to the president for announcing these wonderful achievements.
Thank you.
Congratulations all achievers, thank you president.
Thank you sir, thank you for joining, over to your Toastmaster Ravish.
Thank you, Toastmaster Sita Agarwal. And yes, it's worth highlighting the achievements because it not only gives the motivations to the all the Toastmasters to achieve and go further in their journeys. In this Toastmasters fraternity. So, again, we also congratulate all the achievers for thing. Well, fellow Toastmasters, moving further with the agenda. Well, now it's time to thank someone for the something they have done. To show our love, appreciation and thankfulness, I take the privilege to humbly invite our own club, VPPR. Toastmaster Arun Vasan onto the virtual platform to propose the formal word of thanks. Toastmaster Arun Vasan, the stage is all yours.
Good evening fellow Toastmasters, I am indeed honored to have this word of thanks and I have a list of dignitaries whom I would like to thanks personally. Because they joined us, they gave us word of encouragement and to start with the Toastmaster Shyam. He was there, he was encouraging followed by Toastmaster Vasudar. Then, of course, Toastmaster Martin, staying out till now and encouraging, thanks for you. And all the team members of our beloved principal, Toastmaster Hamid Saad. And I think they were very sincere, they were staying throughout and through the chat bosses, they were also sharing their point of view. And which was really heartening and we enjoyed to see such a huge audience at one stage, it almost touched 38, 38 number of participants. So, I need, I would be probably thanking each and every one of you personally that you took so much pains and you are there with us throughout this one. And then, of course, there were Shafista Qadr, Anjum Sultana, Mahajibin Maha, then our area 53 director, Toastmaster Arun Shankar. And then, we also had DTM Shekhar Tiwari, he stayed with us, Toastmaster Vijita Murli also with us and then Nasrin Madam Moos also with us. So, thank you everyone for this, staying with us so much. But special, special thanks and I think this one is from heart to our Dr. Said Hamid. I mean, I take inspiration from you sir that whatever you do, you do with, no, tons and tons of sincerity, tons of dedication. Even the few words that you speak, it always stays in my memory. The last time you came, you said that there are three As in our club who are really As and you said it was Abhilash, myself and one more person. So, and today you started with the word, Suresh have gone to Qatar, you have, you have become Qatar Nak. And all these, this kind of humor, this kind of presence of mind, I am sure you, only you will be having and we are really blessed to, you know, and listen to you all the time. And I think we are really indebted to you that you, it's almost, I was always looking at the watch and looking at you that you are staying awake fresh, it's 12:15. Back in the next day has started and still you are there to support our team, I think words failed me to express my sincere gratitude. With this, I would like to come, give the control back to our MOC, Toastmaster Ravish.
Thank you, Toastmaster Arun Vasan, for the, for giving the word of thanks. Yes, we are thankful to all the participants who have been here and making this event a memorable journey to cherish forever, thank you again. Well, fellow Toastmasters, as every beautiful moment comes to a memorable end, so it's time for me also to sign off. I am very thankful to the Arabian Toastmaster Club President, Toastmaster Sita Agarwal. For giving this wonderful opportunity to serve as a must-have ceremony for the today's program. Thank you very much ma'am and back to you, Presiding Officer, for conducting the further business session. Thank you ma'am.
Thank you, Toastmaster Ravish, don't you all feel that he really gave us a very enjoyable, a smooth and a pleasant roller coaster ride? Yes, a big round of applause for the Toastmaster Ravish Malpani. Thank you, Toastmaster Ravish. Any great event is the hard work of few leaders. And when we are celebrating, we should celebrate, we should recognize their hard works. So, now let's move forward with the recognition of the participation certificate. I would like to present this certificate to Toastmaster Ravish Malpani for the Master of Ceremony of the evening. Please accept it, Toastmaster Ravish.
Thank you ma'am, gladly accept this, thank you.
Next is Toastmaster Shanti Rekha for the debate master, most entertaining session of the evening. She conducted the debate in a graceful way, thank you, Toastmaster Shanti Rekha. The next is our time of Toastmasters Vasanthis Sai Krishna to keep a track of time. So that we can go ask for the agenda within the time, thank you, Toastmaster Vasanthi. And Toastmaster Manoj Kumar, Zoom Master for the ceremony. Thank you, Toastmaster Manoj, for all your contribution. Dear Arabians, our next meeting will be on the 20th of November, 10th of November. And I request you all, please join the our regular meeting in the same way as we are present for the anniversary celebration meeting. Is anything else to be discussed?
Just one photos.
Yeah.
Goodbye photo.
Before I adjourn the meeting, I request everyone, please switch on your camera so that our VPPR can capture your smiling face, a beautiful brainy face, thank you.
Toastmaster. Toastmaster Abid and members from MS Education, all of you are, if you can just switch on for a second.